Please, thank you. All right, welcome everyone. We started our meeting at 6:00. We finished off with some non-public business and we're now back into public session at 6:27 PM. It's the August, it's August, April 14th.
[laughing]
Well, it started with A.
I don't want to miss the summer.
April 14, 2025 meeting Kingston Select Board. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance if you would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I will introduce the board that's here tonight, starting to my right, Board Member Ellen Faulkner. Select Board Member Peter Baiki is not here tonight, so we'll have four board members. To my immediate right, Ellie Alessio, Board Member and Vice Chair. I'm Glenn Koppelman, your Chair. To my immediate left, Susan Eyre, our Administrative Assistant. And to her left, Lori Swed, Board Member. In the audience, we have our Highway Agent, Tom Rowan, with us. And folks, please make sure to, Ellen, you might want to bring that mic close to you when you do speak. Make sure to use them, otherwise we'll get the evil rap on the window from, there you go. Okay. First order of business is... Or hand it off. All right, we have an appointment scheduled with Mr. Pava of the Gideon Lodge, and Lori's going to set you up right there if you come to the table.
You're good to go.
Did she even press the button for me?
So it's green, which means that you're live and people can hear you. Just leave the mic on the table.
Okay.
And if you'd introduce yourself for us, please, and who you are and your address, if you could.
John Pava, 22 First Street, Kingston, New Hampshire, representing Gideon Lodge, 8 Church Street. So, I don't know where to start, really.
Well, wherever you like.
Obviously, it's the monies, the pilot money, is that what we're calling it?
Okay.
That the lodge will be getting charged?
Yes.
In lieu of taxes, right?
Pilot stands, it's an acronym that stands for those who are interested, it's Payment in Lieu of Taxes, which is something that was voted by the voters in 1992, I believe, which is where it started.
Right.
So, go, carry on.
Okay, so, a lot of the lodge members are asking me to ask about receipts of where that money went prior to '92. So we're wondering about that. Because it was never used for the purpose they told us it was going to be used for?
Well, it's my understanding that prior to '92, I don't know what happened prior to '92, and use your microphone, please.
Prior to '92, there was no exchange of funds between the lodge and the town. It was as a result of a vote in '92 before the easement that was awarded in the back, that's what the lodge was seeking compensation for. And the town decided to do a pilot payment in lieu of taxes. And it was decided at that time it would be $1,000 a year from the lodge to the town instead of paying taxes. And the only reason, the lodge has not filed paperwork to be certified as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. So the only way the town could do anything was to agree on a payment in lieu of taxes, and the agreement was for $1,000. The attorney at the time, the town attorney at the time said, listen, either you guys are tax exempt and you're not, and the selectmen dropped it, basically, and didn't collect any money from the lodge since then, at all. So from '92 till it came up again last year, no money was collected or exchanged between the lodge and the town.
Okay.
So in last year, where we changed assessors, and the new assessor came on board and said, hey, wait a minute, we don't have the paperwork for the lodge to designate it either as a nonprofit or for pilot. There was no paperwork, we didn't have any, and as it turned out, the lodge didn't either. We couldn't find the letters, we couldn't find the letters. So what the board decided was to reinstate the pilot, upgrade the fees to the 2024 value of the $1,000, it was $1,000 a year, and so we went to the 2,200, whatever it was. And going forward, that's what we're asking to collect from the lodge in lieu of taxes.
Right. And your paperwork did say that, you read it at that meeting I was at, that it would go up.
Correct. In the original, yeah.
Yeah, well, right.
So...
It would go up every five years.
In 1992, the warrant article that was proposed to the town, which was adopted by the town, I believe was proposed by the lodge, and it was, the lodge was asking for a payment in lieu of taxes at $1,000 a year in exchange for an easement down to Greenwood Pond that the town could use. And so that's how it was, but as Ellie explained, there was some discussion about, between the town attorney and the select board at the time, and apparently, some discussion or suggestion that the town shouldn't even collect that thousand. It's my contention that that was a town vote, and I don't think the select board had any authority to override that town vote. So that payment in lieu of taxes should have been collected over the last 30 some odd years.
Right.
It never was. And so, when this got brought back to our attention, and we worked with our assessor, and came up with the new proposal, we said that we would start it now, we would not go back and collect any previous monies, so, you know, there was enough fault to share, we figured we weren't going to do that.
Right.
But there was also a clause in the original warrant article that allowed the pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes, to be increased over time, you know, based on inflation and so forth, and so...
Every five years.
Well...
When we did the reassessment...
Well, the original warrant article didn't say five years. Our vote to re-implement or to restart the pilot, we said that we would look at it from this point forward, every five-year revaluation for the town, and the assessor would then make a recommendation to the select board every five years about whether or not to modify that number. So from 2024 to 2029, the number would be... Twenty, no, it was $2,236, which represented current day value in 2024 of that original $1,000.
Okay. I don't have a fight with any of that myself. Obviously, some members do, but only for the fact that it hadn't been paid for so long, why all of a sudden? But I understand where you guys are coming from. What I'm looking for today is maybe part of that, is it said in your paperwork it's supposed to be used for a lifeguard and a porta potty?
That was presented to us by one of your other members, and I don't have the warrant article in front of me. I don't believe that the warrant article specifically said that, but it did talk about the pilot was in exchange for an easement over your property so that the town would have access to Greenwood Pond.
Okay, so we don't have anything saying that exactly, it was just a word of mouth?
I don't believe that it was in the warrant article that way, it might have been part of some discussion, but I don't believe that it was in the warrant article.
So what I was trying to do is maybe take some of this money and direct it towards a lifeguard for over there, which I would be able to tell my insurance company, yes, we have waterfront property that townspeople are using, but we have a full-time lifeguard. That would help us a little bit there, as we said on that at the last meeting, you know, everybody, everything's going up, they're going up, and so our insurance has gone through the roof, and it's, I'm just looking to try and use that money for what it was said, but like I said, I thought that was in paperwork, that that was what it was for.
To best of my knowledge, the specific use of that money was not outlined in the warrant article. It was merely for an exchange of the easement, exchange for the ability for the town to use, traverse, traverse over your property by means of an easement to get to the pond.
Can I play devil's advocate? If the warrant article did state that, then how do we channel that money? I'm just trying to think about what your question is. So if the warrant article was specific for a lifeguard and a porta potty, then is that the, that mon, I'm playing devil's advocate, then how is that paid? Is it paid with that pilot money? Is that, was that the intent?
That's what...
That's the question I'm asking for him, right? So if it was, is, we take that $2,200 and pay for a lifeguard for the season?
Unfortunately.
Right.
You know?
I believe we have lifeguards at any town waterfront. Be honest with you.
And there is enough money, there is enough money to cover them.
And that won't count.
Again, I'm getting that because that's what I was told, and I thought that was in paperwork.
You know, I brought that warrant article for the last three meetings with you, and I do not have it, so I can't...
I was out of town the last meeting, and my wife looked up the recording, I'm like, they had to talk about it.
Otherwise, I would read it to you.
Town report, is it online? 1992 town report?
We'd be happy to share it with you so that you can see the wording. I mean, it's 1992, you could actually go online and pull up that, the town report, and read it, it was a specific warrant article.
Town report?
The town report for '92, so, yeah.
If you have any trouble finding it, Susan could contact you.
Okay. That'd be great, that'd be great. So while I'm here, I'll throw a couple of other things. The water management, we spoke of, can we talk about that as well?
Sure.
So if we, if that goes through where the town is using the beach, will we get any assistance from the town on maintaining that beach? I was just talking to Tom about it before the meeting, about trees that were going to be dropped on that beach that are dangerous. Would that be on us, or would it be on the town?
Well, I think what's happening is that the, Mr. Pava is referring to the Watershed Management Plan Committee, which we formed recently. He was, he and also representative from Congressional Church were at that meeting, because some of the work that's proposed to be done in that watershed management plan involves both of those properties, as well as town and as well as the children's center, I believe. So, the committee is looking at obtaining some funding through New Hampshire D E S to implement one of the first recommendations in that plan, which is stabilization of the banking and some of the improvements to Greenwood Pond to slow down the stormwater runoff going into the pond, which will help hopefully cut down on the excess growth and bloom of cyanobacteria and some of the other kinds of vegetation that are fed by the nutrients that go into the pond. So there are some designs and some proposals to improve that, and a part of that, I believe, involves some of the tree work. Lori?
No.
So, until, I would say we probably don't have a definitive answer on that until we know, first of all, whether we're going to get that grant money and what the proposal looks like, and then obviously, Tom and his department would be involved in doing some of that work probably in support of the grant and the activity, but they would be involved in it just because it's town property.
I knew I was a little premature on that.
No, no, that's fine.
So, we're looking to do something, I know you guys were trying to decide if you're going to send out for something for the 2024 or 2025?
Okay.
Are you holding off on that?
So, here's my suggestion. Since we forgave 30 or so years of...
32, to be exact.
Of payment in lieu of taxes, technically, this new amount should have started to be paid in 2024. Well, administratively here in town, in the town, we didn't quite get our act together to get a bill out to you. So it's my recommendation to the board that we, again, do a forgiveness for 2024, but start the payment in lieu of taxes as was stated at 2,236, starting this year, 2025.
And I would suggest that we do it in two payments, like we do our taxes, we have half a bill in June and the other half in December.
Yeah, that would be...
Would that, I'm assuming that would make it a little more palatable if it's two pieces, like tax bills are?
Yes, that would be perfect.
It probably won't be a traditional tax bill because it'll come out of the finance office, I believe.
Be an invoice, yeah.
Or it has an invoice, because it's a payment in lieu of taxes, so it's a little different, it's on different, it's a different structure.
Okay.
So...
Do you want a motion on that?
We should have a motion on that, because technically, we should be collecting this for 2024 as well, but I'm going to recommend that we start this year.
Okay. I'll move that we authorize the Finance Director to bill the Gideon Lodge twice a year, biannually, for the pilot payment in lieu of taxes, beginning with the June 2025 bill.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ellie, second by Ellen. Further discussion, so just to be clear, the total pilot amount per year is 2,236, so each of those two bills would obviously be half of that number.
Right. And we'll be reassessed every five.
And every five, just like the town gets reassessed, every property gets reassessed, this will get a look at by the town's assessor, and they will then make a recommendation to the select board about whether or not to keep it the same or to increase it, and some justification.
It's smaller amounts than the jump from '92 today to today, it wouldn't be like that at all.
Okay. My guess is that it would follow along typically with whatever the percentage increase would be for... That's correct. But that would be, it's the assessor's recommendation to the select board, the select board is the final decision on it, though.
Okay.
So the select board could choose to accept the assessor's recommendation or not, but it would be reviewed every five years.
Okay. Yeah, the only thing, I was just going to put it out there, what the lodge does for the citizens?
Please.
Just so people are watching, they can see that.
Right, and before, and I want you to do that, but I also want to make sure that everyone knows that none of this is intended to be punitive in any way, and it certainly is not meant to reflect anything that would indicate that we feel that the lodge doesn't do great things for the community. So, just want to make sure that that's out there.
I understand.
You should take the vote first, before...
You should take the vote first, I'm being reminded, so I'm going to ask you to hang on to your comments, or we'll do it after we vote.
Okay.
Is there further discussion?
Yes.
Ellen?
I just want to put out there that waiving this is not necessarily just because the town didn't get their act together. Your motion actually was to waive it up until the day you voted it, based on the language, which was August 26.
Which was August.
Which would have meant that there was only four months left until the end of the year anyway. So waiving it is not really waiving the whole 2,236.
No, we're implementing it in 2025, that's basically what we're doing.
No, I just mean, that's a better thing to let people know that you have money.
So he's not waiving the whole year?
Not waiving the whole, okay.
So you're not waiving the whole year, so can we push that? I know, I know.
Thank you, Ellen. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, so that's unanimous. Mr. Pava?
Very good, thank you.
Good.
So, like I said, the lodge does a lot with the community. Recently, somebody crashed into the library, so we have the bone builders class, I offered the lodge to them, so they're going to be doing the bone builders class down there. I don't know, if you don't know what it is, it's a bunch of elderly people just doing elderly exercises.
Building their bones up.
Yes.
Yes.
My wife runs it, so she, but yeah, so we're doing that.
You'll be there someday.
You know, the food banks, we give to all the towns around, you know, we're giving them between 250 and 500 every year. And, you know, of course, any of the school charities and stuff like that. People bring it to us, we'll give it to them.
And that's not to say, John, that the lodge shouldn't really try to get tax exempt status, and I think I mentioned to you that John Pramberg had said he would help, and you should contact him, he's one of the trustees of the trust funds, and if there's a way you could do that, then the issue becomes moot. If you get that, but it's an IRS status, it's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit.
I thought we were.
No, you'd have to have the right exposure.
C-10, maybe? Maybe we're a C-10?
Anyways.
I just want to be clear, too, that we're not here trying to tell you what to do. I mean...
Right, yes.
Well, I have already put it to you people that I need assistance, so that's why you're helping me.
We're not tax experts here.
Right.
But you might, you, the lodge might want to investigate your options.
Yep.
As to your tax filing status.
Grand Lodge in New Hampshire has been chasing all this stuff since all this came out recently.
I can't imagine that you're the only lodge that is dealing with this.
No, no, all the lodges are having a tough time, and, you know, our numbers are going down, you know?
Like most organizations.
It's not a big pull anymore. But, you know, our numbers are going down all over the state, so some lodges are closing because of these tax bills, they can't, they don't bring in enough money. So, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Appreciate your assistance, I'll pass it on to the lodge.
Communicate with Susan about, if you need to get information about that particular warrant article from '92.
Okay. She, you have my email, correct?
Yes, I can send it out to you.
It'd be perfect, thank you.
And if you do look into your status, you want to talk to our assessor, too, because there's more to it than just the tax exempt, I think.
Okay, so talk to the assessor about that?
I would, yes.
Okay. Do I have to make an appointment with him?
Sorry?
Do I have to make an appointment with him?
Yes.
It's best.
Okay.
And you can do it on the, from the website. They're here on Wednesdays, right?
She's here on every other Monday.
Oh, it's now Monday, okay.
So, call the office and we can set you up.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Public comment number one.
I just wanted to say Ellen didn't have a...
I know.
Oh, you couldn't hear Ellen? Was that during the most recent comment, or?
No, I moved it here so I can't listen.
Okay.
I know I'm not talking, okay.
Okay, thank, thank you. Nothing, Rick? Okay, we will move on. Committee liaison reports. Lori, you had a busy week this past week, so we'll start with you. HDC?
Right, so HDC, we met on Tuesday. There were several residents who came in and needed approval for various things, but Peter Baiki, our fellow selectman, came in to just brief the HDC on the plans for the electrical upgrade and the plywood and like the little structures that the panels are going to be on, and just wanted to make sure that they were aware of that, and they were very happy that he thought about coming in, and, because they, clearly, they don't have to approve it because it's town property, but he just wanted to make sure that they were aware that was going on. We have one of the members who is going to work on redoing all of the historic district signs, because they're all in need of some TLC, so one of the members took that effort on. Wednesday was the rec, commission meeting, and I could only stay for part of that, but they just kind of started going over the very successful egg hunt, Easter egg hunt for the littles, and they had quite a few people. And so they were planning for the adult one, which is the 15th of this month, or this week, so if you haven't signed up for that, I think there's still a couple of openings for the adult Easter egg hunt. And then on Thursday, we had a solid waste and recycling committee meeting, and the Chair of the committee and I went on a field trip of some other recycling centers, and it was, we drove all the way out to London Dairy and it wasn't open, so that was not fun, as we're both sitting in the car staring at the sign that says, "Open in April," with the chain, and we're just looking like, it was comical. Anyway, we went to Northampton, and we still have two more to go to, but Northampton is a very small, they have a very small footprint, so they're, it's ideal for us to kind of model, but we do want to go to the other two, and then also have the select board kind of go and tour and see what we're looking at for future plans on that. And moving forward, I think in our packets, we have the operating plan to sign for the collection center, and I think that's it.
I don't have anything that I can think of, but I'll reserve my right if I think of something in the meantime, before we get to the end. Ellie?
I don't have anything, the planning was, the planning board meets tomorrow night, and I think last week I mentioned that there's just several design reviews. One is on the library's proposed addition, the three-season room, and others for the Kingston Fairways property that we shared with East Kingston, and I don't remember exactly what the third one, but there, nothing is being finalized, it's strictly what they call design review. They're going to come before us to review their proposed plans and get some feedback from the planning board.
Before you turn that off, I assume that the seminary property is still in process?
That has been signed off on at the last meeting.
It was?
It was.
Oh.
So they're moving forward.
Okay.
I'm not sure when the fir...
The first four houses were signed off, is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Great.
So they will be beginning construction very shortly. Yes, very exciting.
I know, so exciting.
It is, okay, thanks, Ellen. Ellen?
At this point, most of anything I need to talk about with the board would be related to 91, non-public, so I haven't had any other meetings yet. Budget Committee, I think, comes up at the end of the month, but, so I'll hold off on mine.
Okay, thank you. All right, old business. There was, this is the extension to the option lease agreement for Revision Energy as they go forward with their investigation and due diligence on coming up with a potential design for a solar field at the landfill, the old landfill. And there was a question, Selectman Baiki brought it up to us, one of the whereas's on the first part of the agreement, sounded a little funky, and we weren't sure if that was the correct language, and so Susan has pulled for us, in your packets, the full agreement, which we didn't have then, and also the first option agreement, which was signed in 2024, and it's the same language as what we're being offered this time. So, is the, does the board want... So, is the, does the board want further clarification on this? Or are you okay with us renewing the option?
Did we have, I wasn't here, so did the attorney review this the first time?
Yes. Oh, yes.
I assumed, I didn't like to.
Oh, yeah, never assume, but yes, the attorney did review. And our major concern was that it did not bind the town to having to put a solar array on it. That was the critical piece. Revision wanted the opportunity to review the site, explore the options, look at what was available for funding sources, and whether the site itself was amenable to the array. But it was not a commitment from the town to actually move forward with that solar array. That was the key, and that's what we talked about, I believe, at the last meeting. I think that's what Mr. Baiki raised, that was the issue.
And part of what Peter raised was it was some language that the leasing couldn't terminate the contract or something, but this is very clear on how we can, so, which we didn't have last week.
I think the clause that he was taught, because I don't have that paper in front of me, was that.
It's on the back. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The amendment?
Yes.
Without that one particular whereas?
Yes.
And it had to do with us having to go to town meeting, because we couldn't enter into anything more than a year. And the initial agreement was, they wanted to up to five. So after that initial one, it put that language in, because the town agreed, the town approved us to enter into this.
To explore it.
To explore it, not signing a contract for the landfill. So that one whereas made it so we don't have to go back every single year to keep exploring.
Within that five-year period.
Within that five-year period, and that was the thing that Peter was concerned about.
However, it was, I believe it was due to our council's review of this when we signed it initially, that even though technically, because the town had authorized the board to enter into up to a five-year lease on this particular land, council thought that it would be a good idea to have a renewal clause on an annual basis. And so that is in here, which is why we're now being asked to sign a renewal, because it's in the contract or the agreement, but it's annual. So that's what we're being asked to do, and it's the same one that we signed last year. And again, it's, as you were all saying, it's not authorization to build a solar field, to determine if one is feasible, and to come up with designs that the town could then consider. So if the board is, Susan?
They didn't actually ask us to sign a new agreement.
No.
They asked us to just vote to continue.
Yes.
This is just the old one.
Right.
So you don't really have anything to sign, is all I'm saying.
It was in our packet last month, though.
It was to review.
It was just for.
Just to review, okay.
Yeah.
So we just have to vote on continuing to move forward?
She just wanted us to acknowledge that they're still continuing, because they had requested it, but it went to Phil and not to us, so it wasn't responded to.
So I'm, since I don't have last month's here with me, I'm assuming that it's, we're being asked to sign the second amendment, because this one was the first in '24.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you're not really amending anything. You're just allowing them to continue forward for another year. That amendment was to acknowledge the warrant article.
Okay.
I'm sorry to complicate. If you want something to sign, I can prepare, I don't have it right now.
Well, I thought I had this, and clearly I don't, as far as understanding it. So are we, are we not being asked to do an annual renewal agreement?
They want an annual vote, or you don't have to sign anything?
They have to come forward every year and say they want to continue, and we have to say, okay.
Is anyone prepared to make that motion?
No.
I make a motion to allow Revision Energy to continue with their due diligence of the landfill for a solar array.
For another year.
For another year.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Lori, second by Ellie. Further discussion?
Mrs. Faulkner, you're awful quiet.
No, that worries you, doesn't it?
It does.
It does, it does me, too. I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Abstentions? So that's unanimous, okay, thank you very much. The compensation and benefits study that I provided last month, last two meetings ago, I think, to the board, I provided a draft, that has since gone to our finance director and then on to town council. You have in your packets a revised version. It's done in markup form, so you can see the red items, I believe are Paula's comments, and the blues relate to town council. And so, I read through all the comments, I thought that they were, you know, they were good ones, and I don't have any issues with them, and I'd be prepared to release this based on those comments with the understanding that we might have to look at, because I had specific dates plugged in here, and because we're now a couple of weeks beyond that, we might have to move the, change those dates. Did anyone else have any other comments or commentary on the comments?
So for paragraph F, additional requirements, there's comments on the side, going back and forth, talking about, "We'll communicate as frequently as needed with the select board via phone." Should we say select board or select board representative?
I'm sorry, can you, which number are you at?
Well, it says F, additional requirements.
Oh, because there's an F under general requirements, that's where I am.
Under section three, scope of services.
Thank you.
It's talking about meetings and that the vendor will communicate as frequently as needed with the select board via phone. And then there's comments to decide, going back and forth between the finance director and council about who that should be. So should we say, "As needed with the select board or select board representative?" To give us the latitude?
I'm fine with that. Ellie?
I'm okay with that. I really do think it should come to the full board. I still think.
It should come to the full board, but.
But if we choose not, if it's just a quick meeting, so if we leave, say, "or select board representative," we can decide.
This is only for, during the process of getting it done, it's not the end vote. I mean, clearly, the end of this.
Has to be to all of us.
Is our decision when this is all said and done. But this is just as they're going through, working the process over the couple of months that we're working on this. So then you're suggesting, Ellen, did you have any? So this is, so we're under section three, scope of services, item F.
Additional requirements.
It's highlight, yeah, yep, additional requirements, under number one, meetings.
Yep.
Where it's highlighted in blue, select board or its representative?
Yeah, I think so, that way it gives, if for some reason we're not all available, then someone can speak on the board's behalf.
Okay, anything else? Oh, I should look at, we should look at the dates. Okay, so on the very front page, "All proposals must be received no later than 12 noon on April 30." Well, that's clearly, needs to be moved out now, so.
We're in May next week, right?
No, it's still a couple of weeks. Yes.
May 15th, May 15th's a possibility.
May 15th is a Thursday, you wanna make it the 16th?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll change, on the first page, change April 30 to May 16. All right, and we gave noon time as the time deadline. And then on the request for proposals, section one, general requirements, we talk, same thing, we talk about proposals no later than, we need to change April 30 to May 15, 16, sorry. 2025. Are those the only dates we need to change? I think so. Somewhere in here, we talked about when we expected, oh, I think it was a broad timeframe, though. I think it was, we didn't give a specific end date, but we gave a number of months before it's supposed to come back to us.
You just say eight weeks. Under section three, scope of services, under three, it says timeline. And above it, under deliverables.
So there's no date, but it does give a number of weeks, okay. So, so then that means eight weeks from when we award it. And if we're looking for proposals by May 16, it probably wouldn't be until the end of May that we'd be doing the award. So we'd be looking at.
And then this is three months.
From July, so it would be well into the summer before we get a.
So we wouldn't be able to, because the 16th is a Friday, we have a 19th meeting, and then we don't have a meeting on the 26th, so our next meeting is the 2nd of June. So that's when you expect we would review them, open them, review them, like, we'll open them on the 19th.
Yes.
And then review through the 2nd. Okay.
So you can make a decision on the 2nd.
So we can make a decision on the 2nd.
Right.
And then it does, oh, hang on, it does say, "Final report presented to the town within three months of the awarding of the contract."
So it's bigger than the 2nd of.
Yeah.
Well, that's.
Well, you have.
Cutting a real cut, because we were hoping to have this.
Well, aren't you going to award it in May, on May 2nd? Didn't that, we just said, May 2nd?
No, no.
I'm sorry.
June 2nd.
June 2nd.
Oh, yeah, we pushed the deadline up to.
We can't open it before you get them.
Why are we pushing the deadline out to May 16th? Why don't we make it May 9th?
Well, if this were to go out.
It's not gonna change anything on the other end, I think you could have the.
Well, it brings you up a full week ahead of time because of Memorial Day.
That Memorial Day, that's two weeks, so if they're in by the 9th, we open them on the 12th, we award on the 19th.
Yeah, you could get it by end of summer, beginning of September versus end of September.
So we're at April 14 now. Lori, you're suggesting we release it tomorrow?
Yes, absolutely, we'll release it tomorrow.
Release it on 4/14, due back when?
The 9th of May. We'd open them on the 12th, and then we could award on the 19th. That gives us two extra weeks, because that Memorial Day really just kind of pushes everything to the right.
Everyone okay with that timeline?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so given that, any other changes or adjustments that folks need to see us make? So I'm assuming that we'll need a motion on this, but I'm assuming that once we have the motion, when we release it, we would post it to NHMA in their classified section, which is oftentimes where RFPs and Qs go. Any other places, we would want to post it on our website. We probably want to push it out on our Facebook page, our social media, the towns page.
Do you have any other options?
I'm sure there are other things that we could do, but that'll probably generate, hopefully, we'll get enough, we'll get, hopefully, we'll get enough to make a decision. So I'm happy to take a motion if someone would like to make, to release the RFP, request for proposals for the wage and benefit study as amended. Motion by Ellie, second by Ellen. Discussion further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Thank you, that's unanimous. Okay, next item on our old business agenda, item is the intent to excavate at the Toromeo property. We have received additional information from the property owner. We've also received more information from some of the residents on Jericho Drive. I think at this point, the board feels that it needs to do a little more investigation at the, regarding this site. We have communicated to our town planner and to our code enforcement officer, but that communication just happened today, so we don't have a report back from them. There was also the thought that the select board might want to actually view it themselves. So if the board has any recommendations on that, we can discuss it.
Doing a site visit, where are we going to walk it? Like, where would we go?
Well, first of all, we need to coordinate with the property owner.
Yep.
It would need to be posted as a meeting. The public would be invited and able to attend. It's considered a meeting, so just like when the planning board does a site walk, it's considered a meeting, and I believe that when the select board does it, it would be the same. So it gets posted, it's not a public hearing, and it's not a public input session, but it is a public meeting. And it would be for the board's benefit to gather more information if it chooses to do so. So again, it would need to be coordinated with the property owner. But before we decide, I mean, I would really like to see input from our town planner and our code enforcement officer on this.
I would like to see the town planner give input on this.
Which is?
The one that says the building permit was granted with the provisions that they meet the town ordinances at the time.
Is that part of the new information we have?
Mr. Toromeo, as far as I know, submitted it.
Just on the backside of that paper we have here, that's by, on your left, right here.
It was issued in 1975, and it says, "This permit is issued with the provision that the proposed lot and building shall meet the requirements set by the ordinances of the Town of Kingston, New Hampshire, in effect at the date of issue, and any variance from these requirements shall automatically void this permit." There's nothing about the Bureau of Mines on it, talks about the town stuff. And I've not seen this before.
We didn't have it.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, this just came from Toromeo this week.
And this was, and this was, this goes back to 1978?
The date of issue of this is 1975.
Yes.
The other side has, talks about the Board of Selectmen adopting a gravel pit ordinance. As of 78.
I think we need additional information from both Pedro and Glenn Greenwood, especially with regards to where we were a couple of years ago with Toromeo, where they were supposed to plant some trees on those berms on the edge of the property that are butted with the neighborhood, and I don't believe that's happened. So we gotta have some accountability from the general. So we've got to have some accountability from the general.
So this permit from 1975 was, was, at that time, apparently for the wrong correction.
They've expanded from there?
Oh, yes.
It's 50 years ago.
But 1975, they say they're going to comply with the town's ordinances. I don't believe we had this before.
Glenn didn't create an ordinance until 78.
We had other ordinances specific to the industrial zone prior to that time.
We'll have Glenn look at that. He did see this, but he took it mostly as, oh, okay, so this is the piece that we didn't have showing they were in operation.
I understand what the point was.
Yeah. But that's another point.
So I don't see a sign. Anything tonight. No, no cutting, no nothing, until we find out more.
Now, I believe that the permit that we are being asked to sign had a 30-day window, which doesn't end until.
Twenty-fourth.
Tuesday sometime next week.
The 24th, so you meet on Monday.
We meet on Monday, which is the 21st. So between now and then.
Mr. Greenwood and Mr. Avia need to report back to us.
So at the end of that 30 days, if we don't sign it, what happens?
Well, you can deny it.
Well, we, we have, we have the option to deny it.
Okay.
You have to give them a reason.
Yeah, well, you could ask Mr. Toromeo for an extension.
I'm not, I'm not on. We could either deny it, whichever reason, and you could ask Mr. Toromeo for an extension, because we want to do a site walk to be able to approve the permit.
Okay. We just have to take some sort of action.
So I guess, I guess where I'm going is that we're still within a certain day window of time, and so if we can get our code enforcement officer and town planner to.
Visit with us next Monday.
Do, do what they need to do to investigate the current status of the site and, and where we are with it, and report to us next Monday.
In the meantime, should we see if we can, since we seem to be having questions about locations on Jericho Drive, should we ask to be able to enter that property to? We got, we got videos that we have no true concept of. We can make assumptions where people were standing when they were trying to measure things and stuff, but without actually seeing where the property line is, we should make assumptions as to what that's trying to show us. So should we try and go on that property as well? I don't know.
Have Mr. Greenwood and or Mr. Avia do so to verify what, what's the actual, I mean, just, just another set of eyes to verify what, what we saw in the videos. And that came through from the, from the residents.
Yes. So is the board comfortable then having town planner and code enforcement officer do the initial investigation and, and gather whatever information they can, bring it back to us, and at that point, we can decide if we're, well, number one, if we're ready to make a decision or not, and whether or not we as a board want to go on site and look at it.
What date is next Monday?
21st.
And when do we have this done by?
24th.
Does that give everybody enough time to decide to do a site walk if we want to? I'm on.
Well, probably not.
That's my point. So should we schedule, you can always cancel a site walk. You might not be able to schedule one in that length of time. I don't know, it's just what the board wants to do. But if the board wants a site walk, I think that's cutting it close.
Well, if there's no penalty to the board for not meeting the 24th, because we need more time, then so be it.
Well, I think if we don't do, if we don't make a decision by the 24th, I think it's automatically granted.
That was my initial, that was my initial question. If we don't do something with this permit, what happens to it?
What's the consequence?
If we don't do something.
Okay, then we got to figure something out.
It doesn't really answer that, but there's no extension for the 30 days. The board would have to sign or decline. If they declined to sign the intent, the board would have to follow the requirements under 501, 50301B regarding notifying the owner and the deficiencies. So.
We still need to have Pedro and Glenn visit that property and see what the heck is going on.
The plant and the pro, and one of the residents? So I think we need both sides of it, right?
I think you need to, because just to verify, it's not to say that the residents are not telling us the truth, but you want another set of eyes to make sure that, no, they haven't done the trees, they haven't put up any berms.
Right.
It's more than 50 feet away from the homeowner's property.
Right, right.
You know, they're, they're just being not responsive to their neighbors.
Right.
And actually not respond, possibly not respond, not responsive to the Board of Selectmen's requirements for previous actions that were taken.
And do we want to, so we have to relay the urgency to the town planner and code enforcement officer to get this done? And then also, do we want to schedule a site visit for us? Just get it on calendar, just like we can cancel it if we don't feel like we need to?
But don't we have to have them in agreement with when we want to go?
Yeah.
We can't just say we want to show up next Tuesday morning at 10 o'clock. They have to agree to that, and if they don't agree.
That's if we want to hold it on their property.
Well, yeah, I would think so.
Well, do we have other options?
I don't know, I'm, I'm not the expert in this area.
We'd need to, it depends on what you want to view. If you want to see the excavation, you need to have permission from Mr. Toromeo.
Right, if we want to.
If you want to check out the berm and that kind of thing.
Exactly, we need permission from the homeowner.
Correct.
Right.
You could technically just get permission from Mr. Toromeo for that as well, but you might have to be climbing over berms, and I don't know how the board feels about that particular activity. I assume.
Yeah. All right, so what are we doing? So we have Glenn and Pedro going to go out there. They're going to have to coordinate that with both the homeowner and Toromeo, right?
I apologize.
Just say that, you know, we contact them tomorrow morning, say this is what we need.
Yep.
And we need to have, we'd like to do a site walk, but if with you or without you, and see what we could arrange with, in the next 10 days, basically is what we have.
Before the 24th.
Before the honor, before the 24th.
Because if we can't get that done, we have to have.
An emergency meeting on the 24th to take action one way or the other.
Exactly, and understand, you cited something, Susan. Understand the requirements of what we need to include if we're denying it.
They have to notify the owner of the deficiencies. And if they're looking at the wetlands, it says here there should be hard evidence of excavation taking place in those areas before declining to sign the intent, so we're back to having a look.
So they've got to see it this week. They have.
Yes.
Yes.
They have to see it this week.
And I, I want to apologize, I think I said Mr. Toromeo several times. It's Mr. Toromeo's heirs who would be the applicant.
All right, so, so where, where does the board stand on the board itself wanting to view the property? Do you want to set a time and then reach out to Mr. Toromeo? I'm sorry.
It's habit.
Heirs to ask if that's a good time for them? I mean, should we just pick a time?
In honor of respect for Mr. Berg, he was not here. Probably later in the day, like at 4 o'clock, would be more appropriate, given that he's working. He may not always be available. I don't know his schedule, he's not here right now, too.
I was actually going to suggest Saturday.
Well, that's a good day, too.
Which kicks it away from the work week.
That's true.
We could do it in the morning.
It could be, I mean, oh, they come to do it all together.
I mean, there's nothing stopping us from doing it together.
They may need to go anyway.
Except that their work week is Monday through Friday.
Oh, great.
Unless they'll come on Saturday, that's outside of their normal work time.
Yep, yep, that's fair.
They might be able to do something Thursday if it could be set up, because that's when Glenn is here.
Right. That's not to say that all of us will be available, however, so.
Why don't we ask Glenn and Pedro if Saturday's okay for them? Glenn has come out to do sight walks with the planning board before the Saturday. He, he may be available. He may not, it is the Saturday before Easter, so he may be busy. But ask them, and then if they're not available, then see if they can go Thursday, and we can go Saturday.
And is our intent for both to visit the excavation site and the property owner, or just one? What's our intent?
What do you want to do?
I think we would want to look at both sides. Because you're not going to get a full picture if you're just looking at one side.
So we're going to ask town planner and code enforcement officer to get on this as quickly as possible during this week. Thursday, as Susan said, Thursday is the day that town planner is in the office.
Unless they want to join us on Saturday.
Unless they want to do it on Saturday, we can join them, perhaps.
You want me to talk to them tomorrow?
Please. I'm around tomorrow, Susan, so if we need to get together, you know, to talk about this, if we for the board to do a site walk, we need to, we need to do it by motion. We need to set it up, we need to set it up as a meeting, it has to be posted. So is that something you're ready to, to do now in anticipation of doing one? We can always cancel it.
Yeah, because we may, I mean, in all fairness, people may be busy that day, and they'll be like, really, can't you come some other day? And if somebody offers us another, another day, Susan, please just let the board know. Maybe we can accommodate that, but.
Want to say Saturday at 9?
Yeah, yeah.
Too late, too early?
No, it's good.
I'm good with that.
So if I can have a motion to schedule a site walk for this coming Saturday, the 19th at 9:00 a.m. Motion by Ellie.
Second.
Discussion, so we would need to be picking a place to meet.
Yep.
And if it's going to be on a private homeowner's property, we would need one of them to give us that authorization and tell us which one it is. That could be a good starting point.
Works for me.
Now, without all of you speaking, if one of you could let us know which property would be the best for us to meet at, should we do this cycle?
If, if you don't mind. Hi, Sarah Tagliari, 20.
No.
I know we can hear you.
Hi, Sarah Tagliari, 24, Jericho. It is my property where those pictures were taken from. That's actually the site that both Chief Briggs and Chief Pellerin have also visited to authenticate that we are in fact on our property when those photos were taken, but you are more than welcome to come out. But I want to clarify, is this open to the public? Like, can anybody come on my property, or is it open to you to see what they've done? This is not where they're going to excavate again, is it?
We don't believe so. They, they sent us a map that looks like they're digging down, not out.
Part of what we hope to verify by the site visit through the planner and the code enforcement officer, and then our visit. To answer your question, if you're granting permission, it is, it is a public meeting, and therefore people can come. If you prefer not to do that, we don't have to.
I may be deferring, just because it is Easter weekend, and we've got family and small children.
It could be just on Thursday for all they need.
We, we live on the, what I'd call the corner lot, so this, oh, is it on?
It's on, but I need your name and address.
Oh, Bob Burke, AC Jericho. So we live on 18, and there's 20 is an empty lot, 22 is another one. They're at 24, and their lot is set pretty far back. So 18, we wanted to come to 18. You could see from our yard, there's no climbing for any of you who wish to want to hike, but you could see the no trespassing signs. You could see the ribbons that are on our property. And in between our property and the next, there's also ribbons marked delineation that are surrounding the wetlands, right, right off of Jericho Drive.
So it's 18 Jericho?
Yes, yeah.
And the name of the property owner?
Joy Burke. Bob Burke, Bob and Joy Burke.
B U R K.
B E R G.
Burke, B E R G, thank you.
And if I may just clarify, and so I think that makes sense for the new intent to excavate.
Right.
If you're looking, if the planning enforcement officer, gentlemen, are looking for potential encroachments, the, the earthen berm, to validate that we are in fact on our property when those photos were taken, they can certainly reach out to Matt Tagliari. I believe Susan has our contact info and arrange that walk. We will absolutely grant that permission with Matt's presence. Oh, and they are a six-day-a-week operation, so you very well leave it on Saturday. Might hear or see them out and about.
Okay, so. We haven't done this by vote yet, have we?
We have not voted.
We have not, okay. So. So we're going to presumably vote to set up a site walk for the board.
At the Burke property.
At the Burke property at 18 Jericho Drive for 9:00 a.m. Saturday morning.
Can I come out of my bathrobe?
Absolutely, just bring coffee with you.
And if, for whatever reason, and, and we'll need to post that, so it'll be a public posting, it'll be a public notice. If for some reason, between now and then, there's a decision not to hold it, we'll get in touch with you and let you know.
Yep.
In the meantime, you also, the, both Glenn and Greenwood and Mr. They need to, our enforcement officer and planner need to contact the Tagliaris and the Burkes to let them know they're coming ahead of time. So that, that does not preclude the public walk on, at 9 o'clock on Saturday.
I work from home, so I'm around, Joy is retired, so we're around even if they want to come separately. I, I know you want to do it together, but if somebody wants to see it, we can just take Joy.
And they may want to come to both, they may want to come earlier, they come back, follow up, whatever. So that, but let's get this rolling anyways in the meantime.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'd be looking for a motion for these.
We have a motion.
We have a motion. Did we specify the location?
Yes.
At 18?
Yes.
Okay.
She just added that now.
All right, anything further?
Should the motion say that the board will approve a change in the date if it's required? And leave it up to you, so that you don't have to?
If the, whoever made the motion, if they'd like to, who did make the motion?
Ellie did, I think.
I have no, that's not, I have no objection. You may need to just change, you get the authority to change the date, but the intent is to visit.
Yes. Okay. There should be something in there authorizing me to change the date as needed. If needed, as needed.
If and when needed.
Further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. It carries unanimously. Okay, so that's where we are with that. Be expect, be expecting some folks to be out there looking at it. We'll try to get the planner and code enforcement officer out this week. And if all goes as planned, we'll, we'll be out there on Saturday morning. Okay, thanks for coming back. Is there anything else we need to do on this? Okay. Next item is the collection center operating plan, which we have in our packets. Next item is the collection center operating plan, which we have in our packets. We do need to sign this. We need... Looks like the chair needs to sign it, so I'd be looking for authorization to do so.
Yeah, it has the chair and vice chair on there.
Oh, sorry. So the motion would be to have the chair and the vice chair sign off on the Kingston Collection Center operating plan guidelines for facility use dated April 2025.
It's still moved.
Motion by Lori.
One second.
Second by Ellen. Discussion.
Nope, 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 hands up.
Did I say discussion?
Yes, and then you went right into motion.
And then I went right to, okay.
I just have a question on employee training program. We said that the, and I don't know if it's necessary for this, but we said that the copies of the staff certifications, blah, 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 available highway department and personnel files. And we had said that we thought that should happen, but I don't know if it needs to be in this document or just it's going to be understood by everybody.
It would just be understood. This is all about what's at the site, so they don't care if there are any place else other than the site.
I just wanted it also on the record that, so that doesn't become any sort of issue in the future. And, hang on a minute. There's one other question. Whether it's important or not, under Kingston Town Administrative Assistance, should we have the extension listed? The phone numbers listed, should we have the extension listed? Doesn't matter to me. I just thought I'd bring it up.
I mean, if they call the...
Yeah, it says it.
Which number is?
It has, it just says 3342.
Okay.
So it'll, they'll get to it. I just...
It'll be the first one.
I saw it and I have a question and I don't care. No, no, I'm good. I wrote down what I had questions on.
Well, it didn't, it looked like you might be. Anything else? Thank you. We did do the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. Did you vote? Well, then say something. Insane or say no.
I'm going to say yes, but I'm going to... I'm hesitating.
I'm hesitating. There's no question about it. Only because this may not go any further beyond this year. You know, it may not. Because I really feel that unless there's a groundswell from the public to support this, I don't see us spending 20, 30, $40,000 a year to recycle if we don't have the support from the public.
The point is, though, that we need this.
So I'm going to state, like I said last week, this, we don't even need to bring it to the select board. Doesn't need your signatures. It was just purely a courtesy to have it in front of the board. So they put the chair and the vice chair signatures on there. It is a requirement for the permit that we have.
Okay.
Period.
And I can accept that. I'm not objecting to the great idea to have what's well written out and thought. I just worry about giving the impression that we're going forward for forever. And I am very hesitant because I just don't see the groundswell of support from the community. That's all. That's my concern. So I'm going to vote yes. Be happy to move forward, but just know that it may not go a lot further.
We will see.
And we will see. And I hope I'm wrong, but I don't think I vote.
Why did you have to throw down the last part?
Thanks for that vote of confidence, Ellie.
How do we feel? And if we just draw, if we didn't do it? I think, we said we were going to give it a good faith effort this year, and I think we should.
Well, it doesn't help when you're just, when you say stuff like that. That's not giving it a good faith effort.
Well, I hope I'm wrong.
Well, then why don't you just let us do it?
I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor?
Didn't we vote?
Oh, we did vote.
That's what started this.
I'll just advise as the rep, next time that it's a courtesy, we don't send it to the board when it doesn't need a signature.
I don't think that's a good idea either.
Susan, which copy would you like us to sign? Any one of these? In here? Oh, there it is. It got, it got buried.
You're bringing chocolate this time.
There. You did. There you go. That's a good enough reason for me. Yes, listen to your brother. Okay. Okay, new business. Opening bids for the supplemental site investigation fieldwork. This is related to the PFAS contamination on the plains. There's further work that needs to be done, and we had to go out to bid for that work. And the notes from Susan say that we received two bids to date. It's a lie. How many?
I got four.
We got four?
Yes.
So we're going to... So we can each open one. We'll give Ellen the box. Yeah. No, it has a little rip strip, so it's... You are. Holy moly. It didn't work.
Okay, I opened one from Mabbett, M-A-B-B-E-T-T. They are out of, it's Mabbett and Associates, Inc. They're out of Stonem, Mass. And this is the technical and price proposal for the supplemental site investigation. I'm just going to get right to the meat of it. We'll review the technical aspects of it, but the cost proposal recommends a lump sum budget of $93,100 for the project. And they broke it out. I won't go into all those details, but they did break it out for tasks. And they list the assumptions that they made coming into their quote. And upon contract award, they can mobilize to begin site activities as soon as April 28th. And expect a field implementation six weeks with a target end date of June 9th. $93,100.
I have quotes all over the place.
I'm trying to find where the pricing is.
Those are all bound.
There's a, there's a schedule in the, at the end talking about labor rates, and it's all based on per hour. But what I haven't found yet is the... There it is. Table one, cost proposal. Okay, so this one is for, from Crideri Associates out of Westbrook, Maine. And this is for the supplemental site investigation for the Kingston Fire Department, Kingston, New Hampshire. It's dated April 11, 2025. And it's broken out into, well, you gave a grand total for yours, right?
I did, because there was a lot of lines and I feel like that's not relevant.
So the grand total for this proposal is $77,430. Okay, go ahead.
I have seen one head's proposal, and if I'm reading this correctly, it's $120,000.
Do you think you're reading it correctly?
Says cost proposal and there's a number right here, so...
There you go. Well, the way you said it, I wasn't sure.
Well, again, we have to look at them all because they have it under tasks and how much it would be for each task and stuff.
So I must, I mean, my assumption is that we're not making a decision tonight. We're opening the bids, we're stating what they are, we're stating the prices, and then we would be passing this to someone to do a review of these.
That was going to be my question.
And a recommendation to us for which one to... It's related to the, that's the contamination source, so it's related to...
Just saying. I have page 10. It has proposed project schedule. And it gives out the dates of how each task is completed. And they have broken down different prices for different pieces of the project, but I have yet to see a compiled total anywhere. I'll go through this one more time, but there are no numbers in these pages. Talks about the individuals who will be doing it. And here are the qualifications. State assessment, county fire training academy, thermal remediation and sludge, certificate of insurance. And that's included, which is important. These are the rates per staff members. And they have subcontractor quotes in here, which don't tell us anything about the total. That was 11,000. That was 13,000. That's 3,700. I know that's not the price. And 43,000. So I don't see a total in here.
Not that I don't trust you, Ellie, especially since you, especially since you went through it twice. And the cost proposal, it says, is on page nine. So let's see what's on page nine. Page nine is missing. It goes, it goes page seven, eight, 10.
Then it's not me.
Nope, it's not you. It belongs right here. They're going to be unhappy.
Whoever put that together?
No.
I think I would call it yesterday tomorrow morning.
We could take it, but we wouldn't approve it because there's no cost.
And you can't call it tomorrow morning because they could be watching the meeting tonight and come in and underbid.
Yeah, exactly. We can't.
Right. That's right. I mean, we've opened the bids now.
Oh, that's a shame. That would be a real shame.
Unless we can add up the different things.
It's broken down. All the breakdown is in there.
We could add, we could add them up.
It was up to about 83,000 the last time. I'm giving it this way because it's got a...
We could add them up.
Except that, all those, all those additional ones, I believe, were for subcontractors.
That's correct.
Not for...
They had the hourly, there's a whole page of hourly rates in there.
Right. But there are only, we don't know how many hours. We need...
We actually, we actually need a proposal. We don't have one, so we only got three.
That's correct. We have three valid.
What a shame.
That's too bad.
Somebody's going to lose a job.
Yes.
I'm just double checking to see if it's...
We're going to have to really look through that before we tell them that they didn't send page nine.
So I don't know if it was page 10.
Nope. Well, yeah, and there's no, it's page nine and there's no page nine, so... As you said, the subcontractor quotes are in here, and we could certainly add those up, but it doesn't, it doesn't give us the number for Dantus themselves, which obviously as the general contractor, as the prime, they would have a cost.
Correct.
Added into this.
And the certificate of insurance is in there.
Yep.
So who is going to review these for?
So that's, so that's the question is, who is going to review these?
I had that question because both of our consultants were bidders. So I asked them and they said they could give me some pointers of what you're looking for.
We could ask the guy who didn't send us page nine.
Well, now they're available.
Well, actually, we could send it to them.
I don't know. See how complicated it looks. We know what we were asking for.
So who do we ask this? Who do we talk to? DES? That's a real thrill.
Do we know of any other towns who have gone through this that we could ask them if they have technical experts?
Well, as it turns out, one of our bidders has told us what other towns they're working in currently.
Oh, okay.
With pictures and all types of stuff.
Yeah, but that's very awkward.
It could be because they're working for them currently, so...
Well, too bad we don't have a town manager.
We have a town engineer.
I'm going to, I'm going to suggest, Susan, if you want to take a first pass, first look at them, if you want to talk with me about it, that's fine, but I'm thinking that it might not be a bad idea to reach out to DES and see if they even would entertain doing it. I mean, they might not.
All contracts go through Paula, too. At one point, I mean, she's good at reading them. I give her that much. She's good at that, but...
A lot of this is...
Very technical stuff.
Would Dennis Quinter be a thought, or you mentioned?
Possibility.
The possibility.
He'd have more expertise in understanding, come on, in understanding some of these things than...
Another person would be Dana Trusslow.
I was thinking of Dana, but I, you know...
Has she been a conflict? If she had a conflict, it's something else we're doing. Was it the, oh, no, no, I stand corrected. It could be Dana. Could be. She had a, she had a conflict with the Chuteburg property.
Yes, yes, because she's not working for them.
That's correct, but that would not be...
This is not that.
That's not that. She would be a great resource, I think.
I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to pay her for it.
Well, yeah, of course we would.
We would.
That's why I didn't say Dana, but I think Dana would be great to look at these.
I agree with that.
Susan, do you feel, I mean, I just think it's very...
It's very technical.
The technical part, I know. I can try to compare apples to apples with what they're offering, and it should match the RFP. But beyond that, I...
Even Paula could, Paula could do that just as well, but I think, I'd rather have someone look at the technical overall contract, because that's what we need. Really. You definitely could do the other stuff, the whether they meet the requirements, but...
Rather not be responsible for the rest. So is Dana Trusslow who you want me to call? Or do you want me to start with Dennis?
I'd love it to be Dana.
I go Dana.
Okay.
I think she's probably the better of the two. I mean, Dennis could do it probably, but Dana has a lot of experience in the environmental field and with studies like this.
And wells and water and just water alone. She's a archaeologist.
If you reach out to her, see, number one, if she can do it in a timely manner, and if so, what she would charge us to do it. We should know how much it's going to cost before we encounter.
And she only has three to look at.
Right.
Yeah, it shouldn't be a big thing.
It shouldn't take her very long.
No.
All right, I'll find out. And then you want me to just let you know if I've got through to her and how much?
Yes.
Yeah. Can we just authorize Glenn to approve it?
I have no problem.
Rather than have it come back to us?
Yeah, just keep moving on just so we can go forward.
Is that a motion?
It is.
Second.
Second by Ellen. Motion Ellen, second Ellie. To authorize me to work with Susan and engage... To authorize me to work with Susan and engage Dana Trusslow as appropriate for the review of the site investigation.
Yep.
Proposals. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed abstentions. I need to take a quick break, do you want to carry on the meeting, do you want to take a quick recess?
Oh, no, I need to take a break, too.
Just take a quick break.
All right, why don't we do a five-minute break, Adam? Thank you. Be right back.
I opposed abstentions. That's unanimous. All right. We have the board initiatives, which Susan has compiled and color-coded based on input that she got from each of us. I don't know how the board feels about this and how much you want to discuss it tonight. Would you rather wait till we have a full board? Or do you want to take a crack at picking some priorities?
I'd like to start picking some priorities.
Okay.
What is the color coding? Lori is green.
Oh, it's on the backside.
Oh.
Glenn is green.
Okay.
You're purple.
Oh, got it.
And Ellen is red.
I did that so I glued things together that are similar.
I think we should definitely do the RFP for the ways study.
I know. We can, I mean, like, mark that. It's, I know. Because that's a done one.
Well, it's underway. Yeah, so it's moving along.
Yeah.
So we've taken action on it. Just mark that one underway already. Okay, good start.
I also like number four, the open session. I thought it was a great idea to get more discussion from the community to the board. I thought that was a really good step in the right direction for opening up a dialogue.
Oops.
Too late, I've already finished talking.
Ellie liked number four.
I did like number four. I opened sessions with the select board. I really think we need to implement that. We did, we've done a couple breakfasts at Benson's and actually posted them as the meetings of the board, and they use the word "meetings" loosely because we were all congregated. But I really think that it's a good idea to have coffee with the select board or do something at the rec center or, I don't know.
Well, if it's in green, which means it was one of the things that I had suggested, and I suspect other folks might have thought the same, but... I mean, my thought was doing it here, just because it's our normal place to meet. But I wouldn't have the table set up like this. I would do it more in a, like, in a circle or in a, just in a more of a casual setting.
Yeah, yeah.
Where we could have coffee and we could have, you know, some really easy donuts or something.
Yeah.
Nothing big.
Something a little sweet.
But an opportunity for folks just to come in and talk about whatever's on their mind. I mean, not a public hearing, not a formal session in any way, but it's, I mean, we have public input sessions, public comment sessions during our meetings, but those are pretty limited in time. And oftentimes, it's commentary based on what's on the agenda. So, I mean, this might be an opportunity for folks just to, and, you know, it might be a complete failure. People might not be interested in doing it. But, you know, one of the things that we keep talking about is that we don't get enough public participation. And I thought maybe by, I have seen other towns do it. I don't know how successful it is, but I thought it'd be worth a try.
And given that we have, I want to say, five or six 55-plus communities, they must have monthly meetings in a community room. Even if we were to go there to a different one every other month, they, every two months, go to visit with one and they are representatives of the select board. We don't all have to go. But we take turns doing that and going there to their site of reference and ask questions or meet your select board or that type of thing. And I don't, I think that's a really good idea, that they should know who we are, that they vote. I have my microphone on, so stop that.
I think taking it on the road says a lot, right? Like, we're going to people as opposed to the expectation is they always come here.
So if we were to, just carrying that a little further, if we were to do, let's say, we were going to...
Well, we have Kingston Pines. I don't know if they have a community room, but I know the next one, too, it does.
Lamp lighter?
Lamp lighter does.
Okay.
Why not contact someone like?
So if we were to, let's say, we were able to arrange it there.
Yeah.
Would we be meeting only with people from that community or could anybody come?
Anybody?
I think anybody should be able to go if they wanted to. Whether they allow it, right.
If it's allowed, I think it would be open to anybody because then you're, it's closer, easier for people that own the community to go there as opposed to, for some folks.
Why don't I ask them? I'd be happy. I mean, I can call Chuck, for example, a former select board member, and just run it by him, see what he says. Is this something that you think your neighbors would be interested in? And would you host us to come in? And let's start with one and see how that goes.
Okay, so you'll reach out to Chuck?
I'll reach out to Chuck, yes.
Okay, great.
So kind of going off of that, and I think Ellen had done this one, number 11, was research ability for online comments questions during a meeting. So that allows people who are home to interact. So Ellen, do you want to?
Yeah, well, I think that it goes along, I was going to bring that up too, saying, talking about reaching out and people interacting. I think we just have to figure out the legality of it because I talked to Adam and he doesn't think that it's that big a deal if you have somebody sort of monitoring the discussion. And then even if it came to just when it was public comment time, that Adam could say, "Oh, we have a comment about this, or we have a question about that." But, or, and if we have someone else besides Susan taking the minutes, they could both be doing it. Just to, but I don't know about, you know, it's not supposed to be for someone to just spew venom or whatever. It's for legitimate questions. So the question I would have for her is like, if something comes on that's not really a legitimate question, can the person who's monitoring the board edit it? You know, and just say, "We're not even going to read that one because that's just mild and nasty and we're not reading it." I don't know those questions, those, the answers to those things, so I think we would have to find that out. But he seems to think that it can be done and set up and not, and we'd have to talk to him about it, obviously, more specifically, but that it could be something that could be worked out. I see them doing it on TV all the time, online shows and...
I'm open for it. It opens, it just allows more people to participate in their local government if they can't get here.
And the only downside, if there is a downside, is that, do we know who we're talking to? I think that would be my only concern, that make sure that it was someone, you know, so-and-so on Jericho Drive, for example.
Right, so we could probably post rules that if you want to ask a question, it has, it cannot be anonymous. It has to be a name, and we have to figure out how to verify that they're a resident.
Right, and all Adam said was, that's all well and good, if there's nobody to say it's not you. You know, that it's like, "Oh yeah, I'm Ellen Faulkner, I'm asking a question." Well, Ellen Faulkner's sitting right there, so I know.
Right, right.
So, but, so there are certainly questions about this process and how we do it and whether it's legal and right to know and all that kind of thing. But I would like to pursue it if the board thought it would be something that we should look into.
Right.
You know, if everybody else is like, "I don't even want to get into that," then I won't bother.
I'm for looking into it and seeing if we can do it.
Yeah, I think it's worth taking a look at it.
Yep.
I mean, we might find that the technicalities and the legalities are such that it's not practical.
Yeah, maybe if we did, let's Zoom. Because Zoom, you should be able to comment.
Yes, right.
And we could, you know, any, anything that would allow somebody, you know, there are people who can't come here. And especially in the winter, you might have people who don't want to deal with the snow or the ice and, but would still like to participate, and this would give them the ability to do that.
So I think that NHMA might be a good resource to talk to. Because I'm sure this is not the first time that a town has had this idea. And it is going to revolve around NHMA and the participation and all that, and it's, I suspect they might very well have some good guidance.
Yeah, we'll contact them.
So you're willing to take that on, Ellen?
Yep.
Okay. So report back to us when you've got something.
I will do that.
Okay.
Oh, and in going along with that, we have had up for at least two years now. As soon as the equipment is fixed, we'll be broadcasting on channel 21 again. Can we look into how we can actually broadcast on channel 21 again? Because we can't now. You can broadcast, but there's no sound. And it's been at least two years that we've been saying we're going to fix it, and it's not fixed.
We're going to assign that to Peter because he said there's a way we can do that. I thought he said it was a way.
It's fine, but it just, it's like, it's been a long time and some people can't work out trying to figure out YouTube and get that and all that stuff, whereas, you know, if you have cable at all, you can see the meeting.
All right, so we're assigning it to Peter because Ellie...
Right, because he said, he had said, Peter had said to us not too long ago that he had talked with someone who thinks he could fix our sound system in nanoseconds.
Right, and that was the sound in the building, but that person may also have ideas on how to...
Yes.
So...
Adam, do you have any comment about that? I hear you rolling about.
My opinion, what you just made sort of that, I think that discussion was fixing.
The sound in here.
Whereas getting the broadcast out is a difference, a difference.
But it wouldn't hurt to ask Peter to look into it first.
Exactly. If they can fix the acoustics, maybe they could fix the broadcast.
Right, so we'll look into it, Adam.
So, who's going to communicate this to Peter, Susan? Ask him if he's comfortable.
Yeah, I mean, if he says, "I don't know what you people are talking about. I don't know how to fix that," well, then we'll try.
Well, he wouldn't necessarily know, but I thought he knew someone.
No, but he might know somebody who can.
Yes.
Well, Ellen, while you have the microphone, were there any others on your list or elsewhere that you wanted to plug?
Well, we talked about the monthly meetings at the town hall for the department staff. And I wasn't clear how we all felt about whether we were going to be able to...
I don't see that as a board initiative. I think they should do that anyways, period.
Okay.
I don't see it as a board...
No, 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 I just had it down that I wanted, you know, this is one of those that I didn't want to forget something.
That included closing for an hour.
For an hour.
So that would have to be a board...
Decision anyway.
If we're closing.
For an hour, one day a month, to have them open at nine, so they could have a meeting from eight to nine.
Mm-hmm. Which I'm in favor for because it's just one hour a month.
And they're all supposed to be here at eight, right?
Exactly. Oh, yeah, no, this is, this is a mandatory meeting. This isn't come in late. This is a mandatory meeting, and depending on when they have it, I will attend. I'll make sure everybody's there.
So is it your expectation, Ellen, that if we implement this, that you as the liaison to, right now, to these folks, that you would be our representative at the meeting?
Yeah, yeah, depending on when they have it. But, yeah, but I will...
You should be able to influence that.
I would think so. So I'm going to talk to everybody, but I didn't want to talk to people about what day. It's good for, you know, to try and get a consensus of time.
I would say just talking to Tammy first of all.
I talked to Tammy.
Okay.
And she said that she thought this was a good idea, so I will talk to them about scheduling and stuff like that.
We'll just have to make sure we give the public enough notice, right? Publicize it everywhere.
I mean, while we're on that back page, Ellen, I think that first one, number 10, I think that's something we ought to have.
I think so. I think it would help the board plan, you know, we all have schedules. And if we know, for example, that there's something due for raises or something, you see in the calendar when it's due and so that it doesn't come as a surprise with people having...
So where is this calendar?
Yeah, who would keep it and where is it? Is it a public calendar or it's internal?
It's more for, there were things that the board of selectmen either should be doing or should know that their staff needs to have it done on their behalf. And I think it wouldn't hurt for the board of selectmen to have that kind of information. A lot of it is on the calendar we get from the NHMA anyway. Some of it would be, or, you know, no, from a...
Election dates are from that calendar and...
But it's also that we'd have to decide on certain deadlines. For example, I don't think it's, I think that we should have anything to do with money done by the end of the year so that the budget committee has a full accounting of what we want instead of throwing money at it because we're not sure. And I think that has to do with setting our own deadlines. It's not anybody's fault, but all of a sudden, there's all types of stuff going on.
Sure.
Everybody else is doing their thing, and then all of a sudden, the selectmen are like, "Oh, we have to go to the budget committee and we might not have all the ducks in a row."
So this is a select board calendar?
Yeah.
Okay, so then the select board administrative assistant would maintain that calendar?
Yes.
And then how do we all access it?
Well, I'm happy with, just give us a piece of paper with the dates on it, but I don't know what you all need.
Well, I mean, then, then, so, I mean, clearly it would be a living document, but it should also be something online? Not, not, not online open to the public, but something that we can access? I don't want a piece, I don't want a calendar printed out every week for me.
It doesn't, I would assume that this, this is sort of an annual list of things that we need to do regularly.
Until we figure that out, like, it's gonna, you're gonna, we're gonna be adding to it for a while. We're not going to just publish it and it's not changing. So it should, as we discover things, things would be added to it. Dates may change. So it's not set in stone and then it never changes. So clearly, you're, you would put it in a calendar, right? Can you share your calendar to people? Like, how are we, mechanically, how are we doing this?
Well, let's figure out if we want to do it, and then we'll figure out the mechanics.
Okay.
If we can get the mechanics taken care of, as you say, you know, sometimes you can go on Google or something and just create a calendar and send it to certain people. Maybe that's what we have to do. But if we, we want to set up a calendar, but some of it is going to be that the board decides, for example, "Okay, budget season starts in September. On this date, we should have met with all of the people we have to meet with to come in with a recommendation to the board, because then we're going to have to set it up and make sure it's in the budget" and that kind of thing.
No, I understand, understand. I'm just, so...
If you tell me what you want on there, I can start a draft, and then, do you all have access to the, to the server?
No.
If you went on a shared drive?
We don't.
No.
You don't.
We do not.
I don't want another calendar. I'd rather you say to me, "All right, we need X, you, this date, done." I don't care about everybody.
Sure.
I just want...
Be very honest with me.
No, it's fair.
It's not what everybody needs to do, is that the board of selectmen have certain requirements during the year.
Yes.
And some of it is just that you're going to fill out paperwork for us and you're going to send it into whoever you have to send it into, but we should know that that needs to be done. Because with the board of, we should, not that we're going to do anything about it, but we just have a calendar that says November 5th, DRA.
It could be like your select board calendar meeting that you give out.
It's not, it's not a, it's just...
Not, not, not expanded, a different calendar, Susan.
A different one, but I mean, it's the same idea.
Yes.
These are deadlines for certain things.
Yes.
And this year, this contract is up, and you're going to want to look at it on this date and whatever.
Yeah, it's just stuff that we have to do that all of a sudden, it's not one of those that, "Oh, God, it's due tomorrow, so we have to meet the day before election to do everyone's raises." That kind of thing. That shouldn't, that, that doesn't need to happen if we know ahead of time it's going to be done. There'll be more than one person's eyes looking at it.
Well, I can start a draft and see where it goes if you, you know, tell me the sort of things you want.
When's our budgets due?
Yeah.
So that way, we can plan it better and come up with good numbers for...
When our performance evaluations do.
Yeah, all that kind of stuff. So that's, we're aware, and it's basically so we can set our own personal calendars to know when we have to, "Oh, that week I got to get this stuff done."
So you have to input from a lot of different...
It's not...
Yeah, well, I already have the budget calendar. There's things like that that I can incorporate into what you have to do. Yeah, but, yeah.
Okay.
So Susan, you'll attempt?
I'll start.
I think we're talking about making it more complicated than it actually will be.
It'll be very simple to start. And then you can look at it.
Simple is fun.
Tell me what's missing.
Number two on the list, I mean, the issue of, I mean, it's labeled here as town administrator, but it could be town manager, it could be some, some form of overall management position for, for the town.
We still do need a town administrator, and it becomes more obvious with each passing year. There's no question about it.
Right. So...
I think we just put it in the budget next year, quite honestly. I'm done asking permission. I know, I know, we're not going to agree on it, and that's okay.
Well, no, no, I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing.
We, we are, as a, we are so behind in, our, the five of us are kind-hearted citizens that want to do good by the town. We are not experts in town management. We are not experts in contracts, in even managing municipal resources. We're not experts at it. We do the best we can because we care about our town. And we are long overdue to have a professional town administrator to help us move things forward. I just, we've asked three times for the town, most recently this past year, and they zeroed out the dollars, so it really made it moot, even at the deliberative session. And I, I think we are remiss in not moving forward with it and putting it in place. You look at the school district, it's not a prime example of great management because I think, in my opinion, there's a lot of management members and it needs to be reduced. But be that as it may, that superintendent's job is to help that school board make the right decisions, and it's up to the superintendent and his or her management team to implement those decisions. It's not up to me and you and you and you to do it. It's got to be our department heads. We're lucky we have such great people at the helm of each division that we oversee. But it's, it's a big ask of the five of us to keep moving forward as the times become more complicated.
Then it's up to us to explain that to the voters so they can vote for it.
Yeah, it is, and I think...
I'll put it in the budget.
So I think, I think going off of that, because I wrote one of these, is somebody had asked the question during the deliberative sessions, you know, "What is the town administrator going to do?" I, I think the way that, we need to be more efficient in the way we run town hall. And the only way to do that is to understand who's doing what tasks, identifying all of those tasks, and then figuring out if we had a town administrator, what tasks would move to a town administrator. Because if it were voted and boom, we get a town administrator, we're not ready for it. We're not ready for it because we don't know, like, the tasks are kind of everywhere. And I, I think the, I think we need to prepare ourselves and position ourselves for when we do get it, because we will eventually, right, one way or another. And I think that's, that's part of it, is, is identifying, we know what the organization looks like right now. What do we want it to look like, you know? Like, building an org chart on what we want it to look like and then repositioning all the tasks. And it could take us a year to figure that out, not to say we're going to do it. But, I mean, we can't just go, "Oh, and now we have it." I mean, that would create more chaos. Whereas if, I think we, we still have a lot of work to do to become more efficient.
We do.
Yeah.
And, I mean, my hope is that through the work that Ellen is doing this year as the liaison to all the folks here in town hall and coming up with recommendations for workflow and all of that, it'll give us a much better base than to build upon for structuring for a town administrator or town manager or something.
Well, I think it's more than just...
Oh, and get the evil eye from the person.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not...
Oh, you're just thinking?
I'm just thinking.
Okay, all right.
I, I think we have to build on what Ellen's doing, Glenn. It's not just all at, on Ellen's feet to do that.
Oh, no, 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 I, I get that from him. I would say, no, it's a start to then...
Yeah.
It's the base work. It's the foundational work that we then build off of. I mean, one, one example that could happen, and it happens in other towns that have town administrators, is that that individual also handles the HR function. And one of the things that we're looking to do is to separate finance from HR for a lot of reasons. I mean...
Just the volume of the tasks go on.
It is. I mean, right, there's too much on one person.
I think that one should move up to the, right up near the top of the list.
No, I, I don't disagree. I think it should be its own effort.
It has nothing to do with Paula or her ability.
No.
She's just, she's got so much to do that, you know, she, she has a, you know, needs help during, during the week and it's, it's, it's too much for one person.
Well, it goes back to being more efficient, separating tasks because she just doesn't have enough hours in the day. And it's not fair to her and it's not fair to the town. So we need to, I, I agree, that needs to be its own thing, and we need to figure out how to do that. Whether it's hiring, you know, somebody already here, we do a consultant. I don't know what that looks like, but figuring that out.
So one of the things that I'm trying to do as we're walking through this list is to make sure that there's a person, at least as the point person in each of these, so that they don't get lost.
And I would caution us, we can't do all of this, so I, it's, that's not going to happen. We're not going to be successful at anything if we pick too many. I'd rather stop right where we are with HR being part of the mix here and revisit in three months and see how far along we've come. Because it's too much for us to do.
Well, I, I think we should all, we can also do number three because we already do department head meetings. So I don't disagree, Ellie. I mean, there's, we should kind of divvy it out, and then, these notes are all over the place. So once they're redone and then we can look at it and see what's going, what's a long haul, what's a short thing to do. You know, doing, reformatting kind of the way the department head meeting works is a no-brainer. I mean, that's an easy thing. It's like, um, you know, let's talk about how we, we already do department head meetings.
Right, and what is it we're missing that we'd like them to include in their reports?
I feel like they, it needs to be more standard and that we need to understand exactly what the taxpayer is paying for. So I would like to see more numbers from folks on, you know, we, we want to go back and we want to ask the taxpayers for more bodies, well justify why you need more bodies. You know, how many calls are you making? How many, you know, whether it's police, whether it's fire? And not to report numbers, just to report numbers, things that are relevant. But it, it needs to be more of a, in my opinion, it, it's great the way it is, but it could be more informational and more substantive in what they're reporting to us and more standard. Because it could be, some weeks, I don't have anything. Like, I, you know, there's, there's no guidelines to what information they're telling us.
So you want to delineate what, you know, subcategories of each department and what, what they're reporting?
Yeah, I think it's a conversation to have with the department heads, clearly. You know, Pedro talks about how many permits. That, that's great. You know, so the, so the town understands what our departments are actually doing. You know, Public Works or the Highway Department has this ticketing system. Okay, well, what's every, what are they doing? You know, how many, how many tickets are facility-based tickets? How many times are the guys having to go fix something? I mean, what are we doing? People want to know what we're doing. And it's not that much of a ask.
And at first I thought, oh, why do we care? But you're right, it does, we keep saying that we need to be able to explain to the town why things are needed.
Yeah.
If we talk about it every week, it gets the information out there as, you know, how busy.
That's right.
It's tough for the police department because they have to be cautious. They can't, they, there are certain things they don't...
They can't report numbers on arrests and all that.
That's what I'm saying, that part's okay.
And sometimes, sometimes they do.
Yeah, he does. He already provides those numbers.
That wasn't the stuff I was talking about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, no, we're not asking for personal information, but the, the town has a right to know how their dollars are being spent and that's one way to do it.
But just numbers is not what I want. I want to hear what they're really doing. If they have 42 arrests in a month, okay, so what else is there?
I've already talked to Joel about that. It's like, as a resident, I want to know, is there a string of cars being broken into in a neighborhood? Like, there's things that we should know about, right? Like, or if there is, like, "Oh, my God, they have rester up. Oh, my gosh, what's going on?" Right?
Yes, because you know what? Because we don't have a newspaper anymore that can tell us that.
Right, exactly. So, so again, I think it's having a discussion with...
A week doesn't go by.
That's why I said it.
Yeah.
That's why I said it.
Or a day or two.
That's why I said it.
And having a discussion with them to tell us what...
I will, yeah.
You know?
That's true.
I don't want numbers just to have numbers. That doesn't give you anything. They have to have that.
Right, right. It doesn't do me any good.
Yeah, what's... Yeah, what's behind the numbers. Right.
We should bring our colleague up to snuff. I don't know if we want to go much further, but he needs to be a part of that. I feel I'm getting uncomfortable for Peter, who's not here tonight, to join in on some of this stuff, so...
Well, we can certainly talk about this more.
We do need to talk. I want to talk about this more. I think this is important.
And as you said, we need to revisit this periodically through the years and how we're doing.
And add-on is the case maybe, as we get things done or in a better place. Let's put it that way.
I think there's some low-hanging fruit that we can take care of and then other stuff is what we're hoping.
Oh, yeah, we are. I mean, a couple of them were well on our way, so there's no question there.
Some of these may be needed to talk about because it may impact budget. Some of these are going to have financial implications.
That's correct.
That we would have to, you know, like consolidate multiple minute-taker positions. Come on. Maybe a legitimate thing to do, but it may be that we don't have the money for it this year, but that we're going to work towards doing it next year and budgeting for it. I don't know that, but I'm just saying that some of the things that we have on here may need to be... Okay, we can't do it this year. We all agree we should, but it's going to be a budget impact, and we'll have to, you know, think about that budget time.
I mean, you know, our budget's not... It can't keep going up. The money's drying up from the federal and state level. We got to get more efficient. We just have to be more efficient.
We don't rely on federal, state. This is not like Massachusetts. We don't get a lot of subsidies. We really don't.
But what little we get is going to go down next year because of all the stuff that's happening, particularly in the state.
I mean, looking at what they cut at the state level, I'm like, holy moly. So we just have to be more efficient, right? Like, we have to count on not getting any more people, and if we do, it's a bonus. But we have to figure out to work the best way with the people that we have.
And we need to make sure that the school board returns whatever they can and not just what they want. And I'll put that as an editorial comment.
Okay. Any other things that you want to hit on this for tonight? Think about some of these. We can continue the discussion.
I actually have a lot of good stuff on there. A lot of good stuff. Yeah.
Okay. What do you got?
So I was thinking, as I was having breakfast at Benson's the other day, that I was looking at the front of the Town Hall, and I love the stairs, but the Town Hall has no curb appeal. Like, when you look at the building, there's no green. It just is blah.
On either side of the stairs, there are plantable areas.
There are, and there's trees on this side, and there's nothing on the other side. And I would like to change that. I don't know how, but I would like to get something living in front of that somehow.
So we'll call that one Town Hall Dress-Up.
Yeah. And I'll gladly take that.
You probably noticed that I did add the volunteer memorial again. I stopped that last year. It's a... I would love to do it. It still needs a lot of work and a lot of discussion, so I'm not sure it's a... I'm not sure it can be a priority, but it's sort of... I'm keeping it on my list of things. We're going to be hearing about the next meeting, I think. Is it the next meeting or a meeting after that? The next department meeting about number eight regarding the next phases of work at Town Hall. So that one's sort of... That one's in the works, so we'll be... So it's going to happen. It's going to be working by itself.
We're plugging away with policies and procedures. That's just something.
Okay. Well, we've actually made our way through most of the list, and I think we've got a good sense for what's happening here.
I think Peter was interested in the increasing volunteerism.
He did. He mentioned it at Candidates Night, and I think he's mentioned it before.
I think he mentioned it here, too. But we'll leave that and see if Peter has any ideas about that next time.
We can discuss that again when he's back with us. I'll set on that for now.
I think so.
Ellen?
Yeah.
The next item is a... We asked for input from our Building Inspectorate and Code Enforcement Officer regarding the renewals for junkyard permits in town, and we got a written report from Pedro, and so that's in our packets. Is everyone satisfied with the information that's here? And are you in a position to authorize issuing the... These are annual renewals, I believe? For junkyard permits? And there are three of them? Good night, Rick. There are three. We have? Okay. So this is the backup information that we requested. Is everyone satisfied with it?
Yes.
This next item Susan drafted, and I made a couple of comments on a letter that we said that we would do on behalf of the Board addressing comments that Mr. Coombs made at our last meeting. That letter was sent to you. Ellie, you have asked for us to hold off on that?
Yes. Peter asked that he... Peter wanted an opportunity to look at this. I think it's a little bit too nice, but that's beside the point. That's my personal opinion.
Okay. Well, since the letter does...
It really refers to Mr. Bakie, and he wants an opportunity to read it before it goes out.
He's cited specifically in the letter.
That's correct.
So I think it's certainly appropriate that he have a chance to weigh in on it before it goes out.
I agree. Thank you.
So... I'm sorry?
That's another question about those...
Oh. That's right.
Well, then...
Why don't we hold off on that, too?
I say hold off, yeah, exactly. Those were attached, right, Susan?
Yeah.
Yes.
There's also a letter drafted, again, Susan drafted it for us based on our request at the last meeting. I don't believe I made any comments to that one. I thought it was fine as it is, and it was the letter to the VF... I'm sorry, the Vet's Club.
You have VFW on the agenda, but it's a Vet's Club.
But it's not. The letter is actually to the Vet's Club. Right. And that is also in our packets.
Yeah, I thought that was fine.
Okay. Anybody else have comments about it?
During the... No, I can't comment. All right.
So if the Board is... Motion and a second, further discussion. Laurie, you're going to abstain from the vote, I assume?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Yep.
One. So three on one is the vote, so it carries. Susan, if you have the original, I will be happy to sign that. Oh, they're all original?
Yeah. It doesn't matter which one you vote for.
Okay. Public participation at Board meetings. Okay. After all of the public comment that we had at our last meeting, Susan was able to find a policy that was adopted by this Board in 2019, which outlines the process that we are supposed to be following for public participation at Board meetings. And it's pretty detailed, and there's a lot of stuff in here. I thought it would be good for us to... We don't need to discuss it tonight, but it would be good for us to look at it. And is... Do we want to keep this as a policy and how we operate with regard to public participation? Do we want... Is there anything on here that we want to change? Is there my question to you?
Well, I don't think I really want to change anything, but I really don't want to change what we've been doing in our meetings because, for the most part, it gives the people opportunity to reach out to us and express their concerns. And with rare exceptions like we had last week where we had so many, that may be when we want to limit who comes up and speak and how often or the time as opposed to in general. Because in general, we don't have that level of participation or issue that needs to be addressed. When I sat on the school board, they have a policy where unless it's on the agenda, there's no discussion of anything. You can't bring up anything new or raise a concern. And that upsets people more than it's... People being the public. It doesn't help if it's on the agenda, you can't talk about it. It's not right. We're still... It's a public board, and we should... People should have an opportunity. I could see restricting if we have a lot of people that need to speak, then you could limit it to three minutes. You can... And we have to do that. We have the authorization by our procedures to do that. But for the most part, it's not a problem, I don't think.
So when, on occasions, when we need to implement it, we at least have a policy to fall back to.
Correct, correct.
Except for one particular speaker. I was proud of the Board last week that they were letting the people who came to the meeting who obviously had issues, that they wanted to talk to the Board, and the Board let them speak and give them... I thought it was a good thing. I think that's what we're here for. So I was proud of the Board about it.
I think we really should. There may be times where you have to, or not let people repeat themselves. I understand that because we do have to conduct business by the same token. They have a right to talk to us when they get a concern, and the school board does a lot, and I don't like that. It's very frustrating from the public's perspective, I think.
And the folks. I mean, when folks take the time to come to a meeting, I mean, that says a lot.
Yeah, I agree.
And this does give them a lot of time. I think it came up because we had some big issues that we were getting out of control, and they wanted something that they could cling to if they needed to rein it in.
And I get that. I definitely appreciate that challenge, if you will, but for the most part, I don't think it's been a... It hasn't been a problem over the last few years, for the most part. It has not been a problem.
Just Susan and I were noticing on the front, it talks about you can speak for three minutes on an agenda item during the first public session, and then you can speak for five minutes on a non-agenda item in the second public. And we don't follow that, but... Because it's not that strict. But then G says public input will be allowed only for items on the agenda. So clearly, there's contradictions. So when Susan and I kind of work on reformatting this, we'll... I mean, keep it just like it is, and then we'll mark it up and say this is what needs to change.
I really believe it. Just because it's not on the agenda, that doesn't mean...
Oh, I agree. I agree. It's just that we're contradicting ourselves in that whole policy.
I know. We follow the school district, and I don't want to do that.
No. So what we've been doing when we're redoing existing policies is putting it in the new format and sending it around as is, and then we'll make changes. So we won't reformat it without G, right? Because we want to keep track of what's been changed for record, for a record. So we'll leave it in, and then we'll take it out.
Yeah, I think eventually, I think that was... It should be more that a decision can't be made unless the item is on the agenda. I think it should reflect something like that.
Yeah. So I think we actually will have a lot of editing on this one particular thing.
And speaking of editing, I was going to comment that I think today's public comment is in a very poor location on our agenda because the only thing they could comment on was getting large.
Right. No, because we don't follow that.
We don't limit anybody's whatever they want.
We haven't been following policy.
That's what I mean if we... But I thought, public comment, number one. No one has a chance to comment. We haven't said anything yet.
It doesn't mean it's on the agenda.
They can bring up stuff that...
It could be later on in the agenda, that they want to say something before we get to it.
Okay, and I'm like, okay.
Because that would be the time to bring it up before we discuss it.
Exactly. Right. But if you want to move those around, it's easy to do.
No, no, no. It's just like, okay.
So Laurie, you and Susan are going to work on this and bring something back to us?
All I'm going to do is reformat it in the procedure. You know, Susan will have it, and then she'll circulate it for us to comment on, and then we'll finalize it. And I don't know, since this is strictly a select board procedure, I don't know that we need to get input from department heads. Generally, we do, right? But this is strictly... This is ours. So this is really just the... Yeah, just us. So yes, we got that.
Okay.
Yep.
So speaking of public comment, number two. And let it be shown that there are... We've lost our one public member who was left.
I had something. I forgot. Under Board Business, it's a new edit. So it was brought to my attention that on Monday nights, there's always an alarm that has tripped in the building when we leave. Always. Right. And I just was talking with Tom about it downstairs. So it's the side door downstairs, so it's... We can't hear it.
So even if you don't go into the office?
Someone goes down the back stairs and goes out?
If you go straight out the door, it won't trip anything. If you're coming into the office and going out the door and then going out the main door, the offices are usually alarmed at that point.
Yeah, when I go down, I alarm.
And then the alarm goes off. So they haven't said anything, but the police are notified. Every week, they look at the time, they're like, oh, it's just the select board. But we can't do that. We have to get better about that.
I guess I don't understand. I mean, I go out, I go to the select board, I go out the door. I don't go into the main.
Yeah, you don't go in the office, right? You go straight out.
You go straight out?
Straight out.
I can't believe that that doesn't trip it.
It doesn't. It won't be... It will trip it if the building's already alarmed, but Ellie leaves usually... Ellie's not locking.
No, I don't lock up anything.
So she won't trip anything going out that emergency exit?
Peter and I usually go out this door down. Chuck did the same thing.
Right, and you go straight out of the door.
We go straight out and slam the door shut so that it's shut. It's not... It's not... No one can get back in.
Right, right.
So we don't go.
So Tom and I walked through it downstairs when we were on the break. So if the main door's not alarmed and you go out that side door, not a problem. If you go down that side door and Susan has already locked the offices, and we go down there and we come through the office, the motion sensors are going to set off the alarm.
But they don't do that.
I don't do that.
But something is...
Straight out.
Something is tripping it every week, and Tom always gets the call and... So we got to figure this out because they've just been like, oh, that's just them. I'm like, what? We know.
But someone's always... I know when I leave, someone's always still in the building. I have not... And I don't even know the alarm for the Selectmen's Office, for example.
Right.
I don't have that alarm, and I don't need to.
Right.
Nor do I.
Exactly.
And I don't want it either, I'm with you on that one, so.
I mean, you can't really let you know the code.
You mean your office?
If I can lock the door to the hallway, then nobody can come in that way, and that would narrow it down.
That's very interesting.
You can just lock that door, someone can get in anyway, and then.
Oh, the one that's right at the bottom of the stairs?
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
But we don't even go in there, I, I don't even enter the office, I go straight out the back door.
Yep, they're saying it's like clockwork every week.
Well, that's it, we'll see what happens.
I know, right.
He should call somebody when it goes off, so we can say, oh.
I said, we, and I told Tom, I said, we never hear it, we never hear anything going off.
No, I believe all the alarms here are silent.
No, they're not, because I've set them off before, and you can hear it on the, oh, oh, some of them, oh, yeah, 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 you can, yeah, 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 'cause I'm like, I don't know my phone.
All right, we're almost there. Well, until.
Just when we think we're out of here.
Let's, let's move through what our public stuff is. Yes, yes, and we're happy, I'm happy about that. Okay, under Correspondents' heard, we have one thing to do yet in the orange folder, and that is an appointment to public office for Elsa Volker, and it is for a term, doesn't say the amount of the term, oh, to expire on 2028, and this is for the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee, which I believe she already serves on.
Yes. Just to renew.
So, this is a renewal of her appointment, she's a dedicated member to, to that committee, and so I would ask for a motion to reappoint Elsa Volker. Thank you, Ellie, seconded by Ellen, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? So, I'm gonna sign this and send it around.
I know, well, we don't have the purple folder with the finance stuff, 'cause Paula is not here, and then there was nothing in here other than this, which we'll pass around.
How about by Laurie, would you do that? Yes. Minutes, we have, we have the Board of Health minutes from March 31, 2025. Motion by Ellie.
Forgot about those.
Seconded by Ellen, discussion, any corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, and then the Select Board minutes for April 7, 2025, and I believe they were public and non-public.
Yep.
So, is it for both?
Yep.
All right. And motion by, who was it?
By Ellie, second, aye.
Oh, yes, second.
Laurie, thank you. Discussion, any corrections, Ellen?
Am I in the right minutes? I'm in the wrong minutes. Here with me.
Probably four.
Four.
You said on page two?
Page two, civil public comment, one is.
Oh.
Page five.
Am I in the right minutes? April 7?
April 7.
Asked of the excavation permit for, oh, for pending for the, oh.
Was this line supposed to say?
Okay, I was looking under public comment, okay.
Uh, excavation permit for, oh, yes, yes, thank you. I can fix that.
When it's right above.
Oh, oh, got it.
Yeah, that's all.
So, then the motion would be for approval as amended, for April 7 minutes? Did we already?
We did.
Oh, you did already.
So, it'll be, the motion is as amended.
As amended, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now, before I answer Ellen's next request, is there any other business to conduct in public? All right, Ellen?
Oh, I need to go into non-public session, because it obstructs all people, that's that one, C.
RSA, a motion to go into non-public for RSA 91, dash A, comma, three, room 2C.
Yep. Thank you.
Motion seconded, roll call, Ellen?
Yes.
Yes, Gleneus, Laurie?
Yes.
So, and just for anybody who happens to be watching, we will be going into non-public session now, we don't have any further business to conduct in public, so this will end the public portion of the Select Board meeting and the broadcast, and.